Question. Yeah, so a lot of parents have some questions about the develop uh for each developmental stages and then um there are also some parents who share their experiences. And um yeah, and I think we continue that discussion in our chat group. Um if you notice in our chat group, we have, we have some engagement with other parents as well already posting some some informations that they they know about um child rearing uh rearing and parenting. I am.
Yep, thank you, Ahmed. So in this session, we're looking into um the education systems, policies and processes, especially in relation to um some of our children or people that we meet now who have children who may be having some issues in school and how we do, how do we go about it in terms of what are the processes that um parents need to know? When some kids, you know, either their kids or their kids are involved with some other kids um issues in in school, so. And uh Jaja will provide us an overview overview of the whole process in itself. Um and then Eric, who have we who have um graciously um accepted our invitation to talk about um the role of uh school boards and some of his um experiences um uh being in that in that uh position. So he will be providing a very unique experience uh from that perspective. And um Jaja will be coming back again in terms of uh conflict resolution, uh restorative uh processes when there are issues and then positive behavior for learning, uh especially from the perspective of teachers as well. So after we have presented all these things, um you may want to um uh share your own experiences um based on this topic and that would be the open forum uh towards the end of uh of the session. So we encourage you to put your questions uh towards the end so that we could have a continuous um sharing of ideas from our speakers first and then we can have um the screen open for uh discussion. And we will be ending with a some, you know, basic instruction for what will happen uh for the next session and that will be session five. Hopefully after and sec two weeks from now. So we will not have next week uh as well as next the following week, but we'll be coming back after the long too long weekends. Okay, so Jack.
Alright, I'm going to share the presentation. Alright. Hmm. Sorry, mabaga. Nakikita ba niyan lahat? Yeah, so today, we wanna, I I wanna give you a brief overview of what happens when when we are faced with a challenging problem. So whether it's your child or they're involved in something else, what what can parents do and what what does the school do? Um, I, okay, so we'll start with the primary school structure and it's very similar with secondary school also. So usually step one is you deal with the individual class classroom teacher. And then the classes are divided, this is in the primary, into the senior syndicate, which is um, I mean the junior syndicate, which is zero to three, year zero to three. And then you've got the senior syndicate, which is year four to eight, so seniors and intermediate. Each of those syndicate teams are led by a team leader and usually that's the deputy principal. And then um those teams um um gather together as a whole, yeah, that that comprises the whole school and the whole school is led by the senior leadership team, which are the deputy principal or assistant principal. And it depends on how big the school is. Pag malaki 'yung school, may dalawang deputy principals. And then uh the principal and the deputy principal, actually, they all um parang sumasagot sila sa board of trustees. So all the teachers, all the staff of the school are actually employed by the board of of trustees and that's how powerful the board of trustees is in a school. So what happens? I put steps here, but I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. So kunyari may problema sa school, ano ba ang pwedeng gawin? So ang first step is, of course, inform niya 'yung classroom teacher. Um so parang ginawan ko 'to na parang traffic light system. 'Yung green is, is the behavior observed at school major ba 'yung behavior or minor pero repetitive? The teachers record the behavior observed, even if the parents have communicated it. And then they gather the data. Depending on severity, parents of both parties are informed. So kahit hindi alam ng teacher, for example, nas um umuwi 'yung bata, sinabi niya, ay um sinuntok ako ni ganyan. Please let your teacher, the classroom teacher know para ma-observe kung ano 'yung nangyari. And then um there's restorative practice, which I'll talk about later on. Now, sometimes um may nangyayari sa bahay that is not observed at school. Like a parent might say na, ah, 'yung anak ko is, there's an anger problem. And then you don't see it in the classroom or they behave differently. You can still help out the child. So if behavior is not observed at school, you are able, as a teacher, we are able to refer to an outside agency to support the child. So pwede kang bibigyan, pwede kang bigyan ng um evaluation sheet or assessment sheet so that um pwede mong ilist 'yung mga behaviors na nakikita mo. The parents can also get a referral from the GP. Pung meron silang napapansin, let's say, ay, parating iratabo 'yung anak ko. And then baka kailangan ng assessment or something. Now, if the behavior is not resolved within the classroom level, hahanap na ng ang nangyayari is you refer to the syndicate team, which I talked about earlier. So 'yan 'yung deputy principals and involved din ang principal diyan. So the team seeks options for learning and behavioral support. Pwedeng in school 'yung support, which is like teacher aid or peer mentoring. I'll talk about that in more detail later. Or they can seek outside support. So dito sa side, I just listed some some ano outside support like RTLB and we'll talk about that in more detail also later. So the team seeks options for support. And eto na sinabi ko, in-school support or outside support. And then in this, in all of these steps, 'yung problem solving with parents is also involved. So minsan pagmas um, pag nas a level na ng syndicate teams, i-involved pwede ka na mag-call ng meeting with the parents to discuss ano ba 'yung nangyayari. You can also make an IEP, which is an individualized education plan that involves the parents. So isusulat 'yung mga behaviors and then they talk about next steps and ba pwedeng gawin. So if you've done that and you've exhausted all the support available for the child, then you get to the last option, which is very, 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 which very, very, very rarely happens. That's the stand down, the suspension or expulsion. Now, in my experience as a teacher here in New Zealand for the past ten years, it very, very rarely happens. At usually, 'yung 'yung nangyayari 'yan sa mga bata na whose parents aren't also supportive, like we had a child, mga intermediate na siya, na na sus- na suspend from the school because violent ang behavior. And the parents, the the grandparents are the grandparent. Only one grandparent is the one taking care of the child because both parents aren't able, you, the other one is in prison. And so it's really extreme case, 'yung stand down, suspension and expulsion. And in this case, involve the community, which is the board of trustees. So sa aden sa Pilipinas, um oops, we just call it, ano 'yan? Eh, kick out or suspension. I'll I'll talk about ano ba 'yung mga 'yun. Kasi even when I moved here, sabi ko, ano ba 'yang stand down? We only call it suspension in the Philippines and then kick out or expulsion. We don't have a stand down. So I'll explain that. This chart that I'm showing you, it's just an overview of the support available. So itong parang traffic light system din 'yan eh, of behavior and learning support that is available. Eighty percent of the kids would be in the orange and the green. 'Yung typical child, which is the normal child, 'yung the behavior that can be dealt with within just classroom or school level is in the green zone. Orange would be kids who need a little bit more support, but the school will be able to support it. And then 'yung red would be 'yung severe spe- children with severe special needs, gifted and talented also goes in the in tier three. Yeah, 'yung this is twenty percent of the kids, actually, no, less than twenty percent of the kids. And so that's sort of just like an overview of how support is given and what types of um support is available in school and outside. We have a separate session for this and we will let you know when that's going to be because that's, there's a lot of detail involved in that. Um, next slide. Ek. So, ano ba stand down, suspension, exclusion and expulsion? What's the difference? So let's say um you've, na- na escalate ng na escalate na na escalate 'yung problema. Umabot na sa point that the child's or the student's behavior harms himself, herself or harms other people or harms the teacher. And and there, and you've already done everything that you can, it's still happening. You can stand down. The principal can decide to stand down the child. So 'yan 'yung ang, sa Pilipinas, ang tawag sa stand down is suspension. So they'll be out of school, pero maximum five days lang per term or or ten days for the whole year. If there, the principal and the parents and the community feels the need na to increase that, then it moves on to a suspension, which is the formal removal of the student from school by a principal. And then involved na 'yung board of trustees dito. So they have to decide, are we gonna lift the suspension? Are we gonna extend the suspension? Or we've done everything and this child is still endangering our community. Are we going to expel the student? So it it moves on to exclusion. 'Yung exclusion is like expulsion, but it's for children age sixteen and under. So you can't expel them because they have the right to be educated, but they can be excluded. And this means they're removed from the school. But once you decide to remove them from the school, you have to make sure that another school or there's another option for the child. We were, we worked with a student a couple of years back who was really violent. Um, 'yun 'yung grandma 'yung nagta-take care of him, ang ang mom, I think, was an alcoholic, dad in prison. So it's really extreme case. Nanununtok ng teacher. Every single day may away sa classroom. And so it was really hard. We've done, na stand down na, na suspend na. So we had no choice because hindi na kaya ng teacher, pati teacher sinusuntok. So the board of trustees decided, we're gonna have to exclude the student. But it took what, like six months? Because ang here up every single day, may na may nasasaktan. But it took so long because you have to make sure that another school will will ano, will take the child. Tapos the next year, so siyempre nakapahinga 'yung teacher for like half a year. The next year, nagre-enroll ulit sa school. Ganun, wala kang choice, ganun talaga because um um motto here is, you know, no child excluded from school. It is the right to be educated. So you really have to to meet that need. Finally, expulsion, it's only for students age sixteen years or more. So this means that the school's board of trustees removes the child, the student from the school. And si- since sixteen years na siya, he's finished with compulsory education, hindi mo na kailangan hanapan ng ng other option. And so, hindi na siya magsischool. So yun. And that's basically the overview of what happens if, yeah, here in the New Zealand system. Now, you can be involved. We did mention that the board of trustees has a very huge role and parents can be involved in that. Ah, sorry, may flowchart pala dito. So, okay, next, ano nangyari? So this flowchart, well, it just, basically, ang summary nito is masalimut ang proseso ng pagstand down at pagsuspend ng estudyante. Because, you know, you have to go through that process. You have to make sure it is legal. You have to make sure that, you know, you've heard both all 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 the sides, the child and the father, the parents or the caregiver needs to be involved in every step of the way and that you always have to hear or get the comment of the child. And and that needs to be recorded. So masalimut 'yan proseso. Um, I have a link, I've included a link in the dami na kabukas dito. So naginclude ako ng link, but I won't talk about this anymore today. But if you're interested, we're sharing with you the slide. There is a link here where this information is um is uh summarized and simplified for parents to understand. So it's found in the ministry educate uh the education.gov.nz link uh website. So you can check that out later on. And we would like now to move to the role of the board of trustees. And I would like to introduce Eric Mina or Joseph Mina, our speaker for today, who's part, who was, who who was part of the board of trustees of um ano school, sorry?
Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart Schools at Oranggon for six years. So he served for two terms as a board of trustees. And and yes, on to you, Eric.
Okay. Thank you, Jaja. Oh, good afternoon to everyone. Hello? Yes, so um, yeah, I'm just, I'll start with the context of what the board is and what's the expectation around the board. I think that's a primary thing we need to understand. Now, was, you know, as Jaja explained earlier, that the board of trustees are actually the sort of the owners or they run the school. So in terms of um looking after the school, first of all, we are essentially the employer for all the teachers and principals in the school and staff. Secondly is, we are accountable for each and everybody uh that goes into the school. So there, eh eh, the role of the board have evolved substantially is, I think, two thousand fifteen in, when they came out with a new law wherein um the responsibility of anything, any incidents that happened in the school setting goes to the board, meaning um there was a law enacted, uh I I think it's part of health and safety. Where in the, i- it's not just the board as a body, but really um each individual board member can be accountable if something terrible happens in the school. So directly accountable, yun, it's a direct accountability. It's not a accountability of the board, but each individual member of the boards would have that accountability. So yeah, it it's quite a a good balance wherein you have your responsibility and at the same time, hand in hand, you have the accountability. So um that that's one of the key things really that um you need to keep in mind that that's that's where the board uh, I mean, that the presence of the board is required. So just continuing on, I guess, just continuing on um what what Jaja was explaining earlier. Ano ba 'yung, what's what's the, what's the role of the board uh in terms of each and individual specific cases, like for example, we're talking about a child's welfare here. Um, under New Zealand law, no, education is a right. It's not a privilege or it's not something that you can um take out of a child. So it's part and parcel of a child's, uh I I guess, a child's um uh, it's not just a right, but part and parcel of a child's life essentially. So if you look at education, irregardless of what's the child's situation, he is entitled to an education. That's um, that's um, I I guess that's the bottom line of it. Now, yun, the the difficulty there is really, um, how do we, how do we go about this if there's problems, uh for example, for a child? Main thing really that you need to understand is that um the board really depends on, I guess, the board structure, but the board that was in, we had a very good, um, uh, I guess, we had a very good relationship with the principal and the staff. And with, there's a high level of trust between the board of trustees and the um school management. So the board does the governance, operations, management goes down to the principal and the staff. That's that's how distinguish it. So from our face, if you look into that situation, yung first thing we need, the board needs to be aware of is is there a right process in place for expulsion or for dealing with um troubled children? Or is there a process in place? Is that something that's uh well documented and well, um, I guess, well um unknown by the school officials? So that's that's the first thing that wrote, the board needs to make sure of. Um, secondly is because for for every critical decision you do, you need to make sure that it goes to the proper process, meaning um, you know, you you investigate it, you've exhausted it, you have the right level of information and data across and uh what has been done so far. So if you, if you can see 'yung the the diagram that Jaja uh presented wherein there's a green and yellow and there's a red section there. The red section there is actually at the point wherein the school official, meaning the principal and vice principal, goes to the board of trustees. So essentially tells them uh, we've got a problem and this is the problem and this is what we've done so far. So if you look at the very bottom, the red one, so this is what we've done so far. Now expulsion um dealing, getting, getting a child's, um, uh ripping out their child's right to education is not something that any principal can do. It has to go through a level wherein it goes up to the board. The board, if needed, gets advice from Ministry of Education. So it's it's that type of, it's you you can, you cannot, this and yeah, uh, you cannot take away that that right out of a child simply because he doesn't want to learn. Uh, that 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 that's that's how difficult it. So, secondly is, uh, so you 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 have that structure wherein it's it's, I think the term there is an an in- an ineligible right, alienable, an alienable like for of the child to to get education. And then, so, once it gets to the point wherein the principal and the and the or the vice principal, the staff approaches the board, that's the only time the board can act on it. Okay, before that point in time, the board might be consulted, the board might be informed, but at 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 the point in time wherein still within policy and procedure, it still needs to be handled by the school officials. Okay? The only time the board gets involved is really, we've done this, we've we've gone to the process. Next step is really, we need to do something about um uh isolating the the student from other students simply because it's his causing harm. Uh, we had the case before, we're in, um, we had some, we had, we had we, somebody enrolled in the school that has special needs. So basically, we cannot say no, but the principal approached the board and asked for help simply because we need to come out with some sort of fencing, uh, a secured fencing with uh uh, on the perimeter of the school. Apparently, 'yung the child wanders out sometimes. So wala siyang sense of um uh boundaries. So he goes out on his own, nawawala, and then we need to call the police. So the the, that's the main feedback that um uh we got out of his old school. Uh, the thing is because he is be- within the um, what they call this, within the jurisdiction of the school. If he enrolls in our school, we we have to, we have to either accept him or go to a process of rejecting him. So it's 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 that, it's that difficult. So in in those cases, once things like, you know, uh, we need, uh, the principal would approach us for, we need some financial support to put up some fencing, make sure that uh there's proper lockable, uh, all all the entrances and gates of the school can be locked and can be managed properly, so it costs money. So that goes to the board and the board decides. In the case of a problematic child wherein uh we're just, I guess, we're just good that we haven't really had that point in time wherein we were talking about expulsion, but um, once, the, once it goes to the board and the and the and the and the board needs to act on it, once what's the principal ask the board for assistance in those matter, the board needs to act on it. Okay, and that act, and that uh process wherein uh what do we need to do? The first, the first thing is really, what do we need to do to safely isolate the child with 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 and and still give him the proper education? That's the first item. We need to have some sort of uh system process in place. What do we need to do to make it happen? Do we need, do you need special assistance? Do you need another person to look after him twenty-four bah- while while he's in school, type of a discuss, type of a mitigation? If all those things, so while those things are happening, you need to make sure that you properly document everything. Okay, properly document everything and properly note down what are the results of those interventions that you were creating? So that's one key thing because at the end of the day, the decision to expel or the decision to um even um even um segregate the student um can be questioned. Okay, it's not necessarily, it's more of it, a a a complaint can be lodged directly in the Ministry of Education complaining about a situation. And the board needs to be able to um, basically substantiate why that happened and why it was that, why are those courses of action? So the, at at the end of the day, when you say expulsion, suspension, uh isolating a student, uh, that's part and partial a decision of the board.
Adko lang Eric. So later on, we'll give you a little bit more detail on how how the school documents that. And so that the process is fair and objective so that the board also can make a decision. I'll just share with you this slide um because parents might think, yun lang ba 'yung ginagawa ng board of trustees? Kick out 'yung bata o hindi? Marami silang roles. So um, share ko lang ulit 'yung slide ng then if may questions, 'yung mga parents, you can type it dito sa chat and then we'll read it for you. Si Baha, some of you might be interested in being part of the board. Uh, don't worry, it's not just, 'yung role niya is not just making decisions on whether so 'yung, 'yung role ng board, sila kasi pinaka boss ng school. So 'yung sinabi ni Eric kanina, they employ the staff in the school. So even if ako teacher, interviewing ako ng principal or DP, ang pinaka boss ko is the board of trustees. Sila 'yung sumasa- sila sumasagot ako sa kanila. So they make sure health and safety, they make sure that every child in that school get what they need. Financial, they make decisions on that. They can even make decisions on school property. They make decisions on, shall we set aside funding for another TA if that's going, a teacher aid? Is that going to solve the behavioral problem of the child instead of kick out? Ganyan. And then curriculum management, they also talk about that. Ano ba 'yung needs ng community natin? Um, tinitingnan din nila 'yung mga reports, literacy, numeracy, everything. Not, are we meeting the curricular needs of our children? And if so, if not, how are we gonna change that? So there, they they have malaki ang kapangyarihan niya.
Exactly, yeah. It's really, it's really the full management of the school. So even even to a point wherein, if the school starts performing poorly,
Yeah.
'yan ang, y- those those things, eh eh, um most of the time, the discussion are around support. So most of the time, 'yung, 'yung principal would approach us simply because they need a couple of funding. Um, uh, they have a couple of projects, capital costs on. But most of the time, it's, it's, it's really the principal approaching us to tell us that, you know, uh, we have, we have a a a literacy problem or we see, it seems that uh based on the result that uh we had recently with a couple of uh NCA, um, the 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 achievement levels are 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 going down in certain cohorts. So those types of discussion really, what do we need? Do we need some more teacher aid and those things? The board makes a decision on that. But in terms of coming up with, you know, uh interventions, most of the time, it comes from the, from the most of the time, it comes from the staff or the school principals. So yung, the board itself is more of making sure that the school is running smoothly, the school is well provided. And it's adhering to a lot of the, I guess, rules and directives of the Ministry of Education.
Anyone would like to have some questions? I think we have seven minutes or so for Eric, for those who would like to directly ask him now, or you can type your questions in our chat section, and then we can read it for you. May, you were raising your hand?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks, Eric, for your sharing. But maybe, can you share to us as well, you know, your own, your experience? How did you find your experience as a member of the board of trustees? Yeah, and for, you know, Filipino community as well? How has that impacted, you know, the participation of the Filipino community within the school?
Okay.
Mahirap ba as a Filipino to be part of the BOT?
Well, it's, basically, it needs to be, you need to really understand why you're joining the board in the first place. For me, at that time, it's really just, that was around 2012, when, 2013, when I joined in. My youngest was in primary school. So for me, the interest there is really, what is the, you know, how can, I'd like to be part of that group of people who teaches or who administers the education to my child. That's the main driver for me at that time. It's really just making sure that, you know, is the New Zealand system or education system really good? As what they're telling us, as compared to, you know, what education we got back in the Philippines. So that's, that's one of the key things, really, that drive me into the board of trustees. Aside from, most of the parents approach is that we really need a representation in the board, because the Filipino community at that time was really growing. So half of, I guess, there's a, there's a point in time wherein the board of trustees recognized the growing population of the Filipino community in the school. And as part of overall, I guess, direction of the school, a certain percentage of the school community needs to be represented in the board. Either way, either they appoint somebody or they elect somebody, the representation needs to be reflected on the board of trustees membership. So, so one of the course of action really was, you know, somebody told me na, "Okay, why not put your hand in the election process?" So being, and yeah, through the process, I won. I won through the, you know. So being one of the board of trustees, really, you need, it's a, I guess, one of the key things really is, it's, you cannot make those, a lot of the decision-making process really relies on the law, the New Zealand education system. The law in that way, and what is an integrated school, what is a special character school? And you have to know this intricacy. So it took some time. It's only a good thing, because in the, in the school where I was elected, we had a very good onboarding process wherein the old existing board of trustees handhold you through. You need to read this, you need to understand this. And it, it, it's the level of, there's a lot of board that deteriorates over time, simply because there's a clash of personality within the board. That is something that I guess we were really cognizant and harmonizing. Making sure that that clash of personality only happens at the point in time where we're setting out policies, but never as a, as a decision-making process. So it was a, it's really, I guess, I'd say it was really an enriching experience for me. I would encourage people to join in. It's not hard work at all. It's more of really just the interest you need to be in, in understanding.
Thank you, Carolina, you wanted to say something? Carolina is from the Ministry of Education.
Oh, okay. It's great, hi, it's great to meet you. Yeah, just wanted to just clarify that, because every school is run differently by each board.
Yes.
And some of the rules, I mean, the directives are the same, the rules are the same, but what each school set up for their own school made a fear. So because we have a group of parents from, you know, all the Wellington region, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that. That is, you may know, finding your school that things have been run exactly the same as the other schools, because they, strategic purpose, or, you know, that the way how they want to set up the curriculum is different. And even some of the ways how they, for example, the complaint process, is set up differently school to school. I was an education advisor once, and it's just, you know, like, it's, something that is really different, it's quite foreign for us, coming from different countries, that schools can be so different and even a process, you know? Like, I was looking at some of the questions, and yeah, you know, our kids have some needs or some circumstances. And in one school, the community might hear that, "Oh, yeah, I went through a similar situation, but in my school, it didn't happen what it happened to your child," you know? So I was just keeping that in mind, that unfortunately, the directives, the rule, the education, the legislation is one. But the way how every school set up those could be different, so that is confusing, unfortunately, yeah.
It's, there are a lot of dynamics you need to be aware of, especially that there's the level of trust between the staff and the board. There's a level of, sometimes, we think, I've met some board members who are very hands-on. So meaning, the level of detail they manage a school is really deep. There are boards that are hands-off, and that really depends on the level of trust. So in those types of dynamics, you would see the different ways of how the school is being run. And how they get involved, the parents is, yeah, one of the, one of the key things, really.
Thank you, Eric. I have just here a comment before you, Ahmed. I'll just read this one. Just curious, this is from Daryl and Candace. Just curious about the stand-down process. My child with autism got stood down for three days before. It happened so quickly, like within 24 hours. So I wonder how, I wonder now if there are exemptions that a school can do, can do it without consulting the board? Continued, what happened was there were two kids fighting. My son retaliated as his friend got pushed by other kids. So pinagtanggol niya, yung batang tinulak, tapos siya na yung, nice to know. My child has autism, so I wonder if that is an exemption to the rule? And Ja or Eric? Yep, sure.
Ideally, ideally, if the child has autism, so when a behavior happens, the school needs to know what triggers that behavior. So you can find the correct, the correct solution to that problematic behavior. And that's why, and when you found that solution to that problematic behavior, then ideally, it should, you'd be able to avoid it. So kung autism, yun dapat, well, dapat yung school meron siyang support for someone who has autism. Like, does the behavior need to be supervised during break times? Kung nangyari siya sa break time? Kung nangyari siya sa classroom? Is there a TA who oversees the child? How severe is the autism? Do they have yung ors na tinatawag na support, actually?
Thank you, Eric or Carolina?
Just one, one, one comment there. Really, I think we need to segregate the situation. First of all, the swiftness of the action, okay? I just want to comment on that. Once harm is implicated in the discussion, meaning there's, there was a fight, there was a harm, your suspension or stood down is normally immediate. That needs to be addressed immediately. Meaning, it's, there needs to be due process, but in terms of isolating people, making sure it doesn't happen the next time around, that needs some action. And then the next set of actions is the one that Jaja is explaining, so that you process on it.
Thank you, Eric. I'm mindful that we may need to go to the next topic. But Carolina, would you like to quickly respond to the same question from the Ministry of Education's perspective? We know that there will be an open forum in the end, and I think one of these topics can be more discussed, hopefully, more in detail towards the end. But just not to let go of this question, Carolina, would you like to say something?
Yes, just quickly, just noting that it's not, a school cannot exclude a child or suspend a child because the child has autism. If a school does that, it's just because it's a safety reason. So there will be a way to keep the children safe, either the son or the classroom. So it is, sometimes it's done because they want to put a plan in place, for example, to have more support coming in or just referring or getting interim response fund to get a teacher aid to work with the child. So, but it is very important, and this is the reason why we have these learning hubs, is that the communication with the school and the home has to be really good. And the parents need to be informed of anything that is happening. So it's working alongside and in partnership with the parents and understanding, because every behavior is a communication, is some form of communication, but with a special needs, is working with the parents, understanding that what we're doing is temporary, while we make sure everyone is safe. And when your child comes back, is because we have a plan in place for everyone to be ready and access learning. So it is not because your child is autistic, it's because it was a safety reason for this to happen. But it's the communication and asking for clarification and asking for what exactly happened is your right as a parent. So it's important to feel comfortable to ask those questions as well.
Thank you very much, Carolina. I think that those discussions actually quite prepare us well for conflict resolutions topic, the next part of it. And I know that there are still comments in our chat section. See, good along in relation to says, sharing the Eric comment here from Alex, just commenting and affirming the need for parents to be actively involved as a school, especially this board or PTA, if there are PTAs in the schools, and to be a part of those. So directly related to the experiences as well as the knowledge that Eric has put in. So I would like to, we would like to go to the next part of the discussion, and then hold on to some of your questions and sharing maybe. And then we can further discuss them towards, and after Jaja's sharing.
Thank you. So what I would like to emphasize also is what Carolina said earlier, that every school is different. But what I'd like to show you is some of the best practices of certain schools, so that when you look for a school or when you encounter a problem in your school, you know what to ask, what questions to ask. You know what the process is in a school that follows these best practices. And then you can make your school accountable for it. How do you do it? What's your process? How is it done? What's the next step? So it's good, because schools will always, always find a way to improve their community. And if parents are involved and they ask the right questions, then, you know, the change, the change is here. So I will share the screen again. And Eric did mention that there is a systematic approach. And so, i-share ko lang, ano ba yung ginagawa ng teachers? We have to record and analyze the behavior, and it follows a systematic approach. So it's not just, oh, that happened. Every single incident that happens goes through a process. And that's, that's the work that the teachers do, that the parents don't see. Yan yung mga, oh, yung lunchtime mo, gilibak mo, or after classes, that's what teachers need to do. So in order for the school to respond in an objective and scientific way, i-share ko lang, all primary schools has an electronic system where they record data. It's called ETAP. And so this ETAP, that's where you record everything, your attendance, and that's shared with the ministry. You record attendance, you record behavior, record literacy, numeracy, all the exams, tests, standardized tests, all the data is in one place, including behavior. And so this is just a sample of an incident, I'll just call it incident report. We just call it PB4L form, which is Positive Behavior for Learning. And I just want to show you how detailed it is, so that, you know, it doesn't feel random when your child is called a behavior. So it talks about the time of the incident, how severe it is, where did it happen, the location, what was the problem behavior? And then here is a paragraph where the teacher talks about specific details. Who were involved? Other names of pupils, which I blocked out. And then, and then possible motivation. And there's response, ano yung ginawa? So this is specific to our school, but it will be different in every school. This is, quiet room is sort of like a timeout room, and every school will have that. And then follow-up action, date. And then what other intervention? For example, meeting with the FANO or the family, stand-down, individualized instruction, other support, like RTLB stands for Resource Teacher Learning Behavior. And then Special Education Referral, this is child and youth, I mean CYF referral. So these are just other, and then there's Health Nurse Referral. So these are just other interventions. So I guess sometimes it's important na may nangyari, like yung question kanina na stand-down yung anak. Minsan importante na nangyari yun. Otherwise, hindi ka makakahanap ng other support for the child. If it doesn't look severe enough, you'll get, you won't get MOE funding, which is the hard part to accept. It needs to look like it is really, the behavior is problematic, so that you get funding for it, which is, yeah, it mahirap talaga. Day of the week, type of day, dry or wet. And so you see how it's very detailed? Because the school needs to understand why it's happening, how it's happening. And then every week, there's a, like in our school, we've got what you call the PB4L team. All the team leaders of the syndicates are part of that, the principal. And then whoever teacher wants to spend more time meeting can also join that group. And every week, they discuss what the problem behaviors are. And you can graph that. So like, this is just an example of a graph. And we're sent that every term or every couple of terms. And then, then the school can problem solve. Oh, after lunch, I mean, second half of lunch, ang daming problema. And in our school, may nangyari, like, we noticed that the problem behaviors are more yung second part ng lunch. So there was a time that they had, the school decided, we're gonna short-circuit the lunch break. There's gonna be a bell in the middle, and then there's, we will supervise the lunch, their eating, and then playtime again, and that decreased the number of incidents. And so all of these are analyzed on a regular basis, so that we can discuss as a whole school, or you can just pick out a student and discuss what are the patterns of behavior? How are we going to solve that? What's triggering the behavior? Where is it happening? So it really needs to be a very scientific approach. This is different for every school. And so you will see in your school, the policies, what are the rules, ano ba yung mga minor behaviors or major behaviors? And you'll find that somewhere, siguro, is a staff room. So this is just something for you to be aware about. It's different for every school. This is just a sample of the school, primary school where I work at. Again, it just shows you, in your school, it's a good thing to ask, where can I find, you know, a chart or a flowchart or whatever it is that lists the policies or the rules of the school, just to make you aware as a parent? Ano ba yung values ng school, ano ba yung sinusunod? And then you find out the process from your specific school. And then you find out the process from your for your specific school. Um so again, this is just a sample of a flow chart from our specific school. And this sort of chart just shows you that all the kids, all the students in the school are the responsibility of all teachers. Like in our school, in Tawa School, we always say that what that child is all, you know, all the children is all our children. Regardless of whether I've taught that child or not, they're all the children. So we all share responsibility because it does take a village to raise a child. And every school will always have like a timeout space. Minsan, it's just a desk outside the principal's office. So in our school, we call it the quiet room. In American language, it might be called detention. And so and and yeah, there I'm just saying that there is a process in your school that determines how what kind of behavior and then what consequence, what the consequence is for each of the kinds of behavior. And then again, parent communication is so important. So we always emphasize home and school partnership. And and now in ngayon, maraming different ways to communicate with the parents. Some of you might use apps like Seesaw, sa ECE, there's what you call Storypart. That was um I don't know what they use sa secondary school, some some schools still use Seesaw. Merong Hero, so there are lots of apps. Ano, social media for schools. And I and then, you know, there's pictures, there's videos, it's marami. Some schools will have their own Facebook um pages, and there's lots of ways to communicate. Now, I wrote here, in rare cases, we use discretion. Because sometimes, you know, we're very lucky sa Filipino community, we know that our parents are very, very supportive. But we have cases. Parents in person or parents that are violent. You know, we have children like that, and sometimes we use discretion. We can't always communicate to them every single behavior because if I say, oh, yung anak niyo may sinuntok today. You know, she the child will get into more trouble. And so, you know, we use that discretion. And again, find out from your school. Or you can initiate that with a classroom teacher and how how's my child? This is just another flow chart that shows that and the sort of the process. So when do we meet with the parents? Again, pag major yung behavior, parents should always be informed of what happened. And if someone was harmed, they the parents of that 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 child that was harmed should always, always be informed of that behavior. And then um in every step of the way, so the the parents need to be informed of what happens, and if it involves, if it needs a face-to-face meeting or a HOE or a what you call it, individualized education plan, then that's necessary for both parents and in the school to be able to plan the next steps, what's going to happen next for this child and what support can we provide? So that's just. So yeah, that's the process of what you you'd want to see in your school. And most schools would follow that. They're they're probably are just differences. Now, um in that process, the child is always, always, always involved. And so it's parang ano yan eh, parang justice system, parang um diba? So kung yung bata nagkasala, yung all the decisions, like stand down siya, ma-suspend siya, in every single decision, even the the first consequence involve, the child is always involved in that conversation. They're never isolated. It's um even for children with special needs, you the school tries their best to really get the child to own up or, you know, face up to that that prob- the the behavior. Because that's the only way that you can change children is is for them to own it. And so um schools follow what you call a restorative practice, and I'll just give you a little bit of a background in that. May time, but wala tayong time for the TED Talk, no? So Siguro ibang session. What do you think, Joey?
We can just provide it to them, that they can view it on their own later on.
We'll share, yeah, we'll share the slides with you. So this is, um I attended PD Professional Development on Restorative Practice in the college. And um we're we watched this TED TED Talk of Marge Thornborn, who's been working with schools in New Zealand and Australia and giving them strategies on how do you have this dialogue with the family? How do you have this dialogue with the child? So basically, a restorative practice is getting the student to be involved in decision-making process regarding their own behavior, getting them to think about their own consequences. It's not just the school deciding, ah, may sinuntok ka, you'll be stood down. Or you're always late, this is the consequence. So this is handing it over to the student. What are you gonna do about it? And involving the family because it also respects their culture, you know, it but why is the behavior happening? Maybe may problema sa bahay or merong ano clash with the culture. So it's just really handing it over to the student and their family. I'll move on to give an example, sorry. Next slide. So basically, restorative practice has four underlying principles. So first, you wanna be, you wanna build a positive relationship with that student. Cause yung interpersonal relationships, that's that majorly influences behavior. And what's causing that behavior? And then it also is based on a culture of care. So you wanna support that mana. So mana is sort of like your pride, your pride as an individual in the school. So you want them to be able to make that decision for themselves. And then restorative practice also emphasizes or values the culture of that particular student. So maybe the behavior is happening because that's how they're raised at home. And there are so many different cultures, for example, like And so, you know, baka And so it it respects, you you're including all the different aspects of the child. And then the approach leads the individual again to take responsibility for their own behavior. So college, some colleges would have the restorative practice circles. So for example, merong bata na parating problematic yung behavior, instead of going to resort to stand down or suspension agad. What they do is they have a restored RP, restorative practice circle. So they call it an RP circle. They call it an RP circle. So they they invite the student and the Fano or kung sino man yung caregivers, pwedeng best friend, anyone who is important to the child. And then they problem solve. They write down, oh, what are, they start with the positives. About the child, what is it that you like about school? What do you do best? On another chart, then they're gonna write down. Problema ngayon, what is um what's stopping you from achieving these this positive behavior? And then in that meeting, they're gonna brainstorm, and the child is going to brainstorm. How do I get rid of the negative behavior and work towards the positive? So that's just an example of how they actually get the cha- the student to change. So before pa umabot sa stand down. Sa primary school, medyo, it's still a bit complex for the little ones. So merong, this is just an example. So yung script, I'll just share with you. When the child is in the timeout space. So we train them, so we we have a dialogue with the children, so they're trained to think and reflect on their behavior. Because they need to learn to be responsible for their actions, and they have to understand that. Um so we ask them to tell a story. We don't just say, ah, ito yung ginawa mo, this is what happened, this is what someone said. So we we listen, we listen to their to their um version of the story, whether it's what happened or not, but we we listen to them. And then we explore the harm, we get them to think about how did that affect, what do you think? How how do you think it affected the other person and all of that? And then we get them to repair the house. How do you think it's going? You can fix that situation. We ask them to think about the other person. How how do you think it affected yourself? How do you think it affected others? And then, so you have to reach an agreement with the child. At school, you say it's not okay to hit someone when you're upset. And we wanna make sure you want, you want the child to say that I I don't want this to happen again. And then you you can, you plan to follow up. So I'm going to check on you later to see if you're doing what's what we've agreed. And so we've got, so this is just in our school and it's we we have the four Fs. We've got front up, face up, fix up, and then finish. And so basically, in every time they're in that timeout space, we have them really reflect on their behavior. The eto for mas junior pa, it's so These are just strategies that our specific school has come up with. It's the messaging that we send to all the children. So alam nila what behavior is expected of you. And then eto yung, this is their reflection sheet. It's so simple because not everyone can write, not everyone has that lot is in that logical thinking space already, but they're really simple. And then yung school where I work at, we've got some positive behavior messaging that specific strategies that we teach our students, for example, yung WITS stands for Walk Away, Ignore, Talk It Out, Seek Help. And so every child knows that because as soon as they start in our school, five years old, we teach that directly. And then that's the program is called Positive Behavior for Learning. So basically, um we're not, behavior in New Zealand schools is not seen as isolate, it's it's not, the approach to behavior is not reactive. But it's more active in the sense that from the very, very lowest level, which is the five-year-old child, the five-year-old new child, whether one day at school or or how many days at school. There, what we want to achieve as a school is already taught to that youngest child, newest child at school. And so the approach is very, very active. So every level and every member of the school hears the same message. Because if you want the child to learn a specific behavior, you have to teach it. You can't just that their respect or, you know, they're not gonna hit, you have to teach it. And the message should be consistent, not just across the school, but you have to communicate that also to the parents because what they learn at school needs, it's a partnership eh. And we've heard that before, we all hear that, even my friends say that to their children. Sa school, you're taught, no, you say stop, you seek help, you ignore the behavior, you do not retaliate. But then they go home and then the parents will say, hindi, lumaban ka. So that but consistent. So we also make sure that we're teaching the parents the strategies that we use at school. And so the language is taught to every child and communicated with the Fano. And then um like in our school, so again, it's different for every school how they do that, but in our school, we've got weekly lessons on behavior. And um our team leader comes up with, merong, we've got lesson plans for that. It's very, very systematic. And it's sent every week, and we can all do that. For example, this week, our focus is, um let's say showing respect or taking turns at the playground. So even specific things like that, and then may may mga different activities, pwedeng, oh, you can make a poster, merong role-playing, or merong babasahin about it. So all of that teaching behavior is very much incorporated in the curriculum. Because, you know, you can't expect them to show good behavior. And so we call it, we can call it values education. So like in our school, merong, we've got two values, respect and responsibility. And then you can ask any child in Tawa School, what are you our two favorite words? They're gonna say, be kind. It's simple, but it it needs to be simple and clear. And so instead of religious education, because it's a public school, yung values education, it cuts across the different religions. Yan na, I think that's it. So yung this next slide is just sort of like So this next slide is just a sample. I'm gonna play a little bit of it, just to emphasize how how, you know, best practices at school, how it's communicated. So this is just a sample. And yeah, so this is, yung next two slides is just a sample of what how behavior is taught. And how it is reinforced in our school, and it will be different in every school. So it's a good thing for you to ask, ano, what strategies does my classroom use? Or what strategies does my school use to reinforce positive behavior? So and every school will have that. It will look differently, but every school will have that. And then yung parang triangle that I showed you, eighty percent of the kids are fine. You know, they will respond to being taught these behaviors directly. There will be the twenty percent who will need other help, or maybe there's a special need, then they will need other support. And yeah, as long as the parents know how, what 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 are these strategies, then that's what's important.
Awesome. Thank you very much, John. So we are now at the open forum and discussion part. I understand there were some comments as well as that is on the chat section, but I would like, Ahmed, do you still have that question in your mind that you would like to share or maybe a comment, as you were raising your hand a bit earlier?
Yeah, I think it has been answered. I was actually just going to refer to the question being raised by by the Candice. Um anyway, um just to raise this um to Eric and to Jaja, you talk about um the Board of Trustees. And you know, back in the Philippines, when we, well, as children, as students back in the Philippines and also being a parent before parent of a student before we move back, we move here into New Zealand, there is what we call a Parents and Teachers Association. My question is it how how is that similar with the Board of Trustees, or is that different from the Boards of Trustees? And if so, is is there such organization that are being courage encouraged in the schools? Maybe Carolina could also answer?
Let 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 me try to answer that first. I I guess um the the Board of Trustees are
I, I guess, um, the, the Board of Trustees are, um, on, on the governance level of things? Okay, so we're more looking after the welfare of the school and the students essentially. Now, in terms of engaging with parents, most of the time, that's needs to be led by the principal, by the management team of the school, so the principals, the staff and the teacher. It's very rare for the Board of Trustees to be, uh, accessible by parents. I think that's, that's one of the key things is, um, uh, but, but, okay, having said that. It's really on the personality of the Board of Trustees. There are some Board of Trustees who are really hands-on, meaning, uh, they'd like to know day-to-day operations of the school and those things. And the engagement with parents do happen. But essentially, for, for, for us, uh, we leave it to the level of the, the teacher. We, it becomes difficult because you need to understand the roles in the school. And if parents would start circumverting the, the principal, if they have problems. It's not being discussed with the principal or with the staff, they go straight to the Board of Trustees, then it creates a lot of issues. So it needs to go that proper process, that's why most of the time, uh, it, it's not that we're trying to hide from the parents. It's more of, we need to go to that, you know, process we're in. The, the escalation that goes from student to teacher to principal and then to the board. So yeah, so associations like, uh, you know, Parents Teacher Association and those things. That's mostly the interaction between giving feedback across how's the student performing and those things. They don't, um, they don't get involved, uh, in, in the management of the school at all. It's more of the support factor that the school needs.
Thank you, Eric.
Answer that question. So PTA is different from the Board of Trustees. BOT again is just governance and they're very objective. And the members of the BOT are usually very skilled. They, they don't just, you know, it's not just any random parent. You have to have something to contribute, whether it's you're an accountant or, you know, you're in governance or you have skills. The PTA, there is a PTA in, I'd say all schools. It will, but the, it's called different names. In Tawa School, the Home and School Committee. So that PTA's job is fundraising, maybe yung school disco, maybe sports, maybe yung mga ganun, the other activities. And anyone can join that. Yung dating school ko, they call it the Fanow Army. And so yun, that's the job of the, yun yung parang PTA, yun ba yung Ahmed yun tinatanong mo?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the one. Uh, there are just some instances when, well, I was a part of, of Parents Support Group. Or Family Support Group. And then, um, I'm thinking if, if these kinds of associations or organizations are being implemented in the schools. Then, um, I think that, 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 that will cover the, the, the parents or the, the Fanow Support Group. I was also a part of before.
Yeah, and there are other ways to be involved. Because, um, may mga different projects ang schools, for example, sports, um, yung mga sport, mga extracurricular sporting groups. Or extracurricular, other extracurricular stuff, stuff. Like dati in Tawa, I know, so now we've got the netball team, parents are leading that. Yung rugby team, parents are also leading that. And then in Tawa School, we've got the Parent Tutor Program. These are volunteers, volunteer parents or grand, grandparents, kahit sino, who come to school to help, um, children read. Kasi, we don't have extra funding for, for literacy. And so, yeah, the school decided, we're just gonna ask for parent volunteers to help them reading. And then merong nagvo-volunteer sa PTP, it's called Perceptual, PMP, Perceptual Motor Program. Which is a program for, uh, six, five to seven-year-olds. Na parang gym, yung mga movement activities, nagvo-volunteer din ang parents to lead that. So there are lots, and then camp, haha, we always need parents or camp. So there are so many ways.
I just, I just, uh, remember, for example, when, when people are calling, the schools are calling for members, uh, for the Board of Trustees. They usually go to the election process. While the, um, you know, PTAs or, uh, those volunteer works, they volunteer, they, whoever is available would like to contribute. Carolina, would you like to say something?
Yes, it's, um, everything is volunteer, also, the Board of Trustees is volunteer. But it's, uh, yes, you say, because it's governance, it has a very strict process of election. And are the, the parents are the one electing, the members that are gonna represent them. While the PTA is, um, but they're not completely disassociated. Because at the end of the day, the funding that the PTA raises goes to a school, which helps also. For example, if, um, um, something is needed in the school that can't be covered by the funding from the ministry. Those funds that have been raised, fundraised, that end up in the school. Can be, that decision is made, wha- what to do with those funds is made by the Board of Trustees. So it's all interlinked and at the end of the day, it's just support. You know, it's a way to connect the community, the school community in different ways and forms. For instance, as Jaja say, you know, some schools won't have enough, um, teacher aid. And they won't have, the, the students won't meet the threshold for receiving, um, funding for teacher aid, sorry. And then, um, some of the fundraising from the PTA could go towards teacher aid hours. So it's just, you know, those decisions will be also with the Board of Trustees saying, okay, with this funding, where is the need? Where will the school be using this in the best possible way? So you have, um, yeah, at this, at the same time, you know, like even though it's the separate, everyone has a very important role. And is just bringing the school together, creating that sense of community, either by funding or supporting with learning. And those relationships that are crucial, yeah.
Thank you, Carolina.
Thank you very much.
Madam, Manayud, Manayudit, you have, uh, some comments, would you like to talk about it?
Uh, about the PTA?
Uh, anything that you have put as well in the chat, uh, group? If, if you're still, uh, not answered or you would like to share?
Ah, okay, so, a- actually, it's, it's just more of sharing because, you know, you know very well that my sons are already who are grown up in the university. So, um, the, the chat info that I have put in there was that I would encourage the, you know, the parents. Uh, prospective, maybe members of the board. Because by experience as a parent, uh, it was my, it was my son who really told us. He just, he just told us, we, we didn't really tell him, okay, you have to join the, the board, you know, the student rep. It was always more of him, you know, telling us that, okay, this is my plan, et cetera. But, um, in hindsight, it was really a very good learning experience for him, I think. Um, because he served, or he was elected for two terms when he was year twelve and year thirteen. So he became more mature. I don't know if it would be, uh, early, you know, too early. But it added to his maturity and he became more confident. And then he faced more responsibilities alongside and after, even after the, the terms. That's why I put in the chat that, you know, you just have to encourage your children. And the responsibility also goes with, you know, um, the maturity or learning experience of the child. And eventually, it will be the whole family who will benefit from it. So, yeah, that's, that's my hindsight, so and encouragement.
Thank you, Manayud. Uh, anyone else? Yep. Oh, Alex, yes, Alex.
I'm still here, um, comment, uh, it was actually earlier. I was thinking, I, I was actually thinking, um, does, does it help if a child or children knows that their, uh, parents or caregivers are quite active in school? And, um, I, I don't know if there's any benchmark to this, but, um, it's actually just a belief coming from me. So, I, I was just asking if there's any valid, you know, valid reasons for that? Or by, um, any baseline, uh, on the, on that belief?
Maya, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, definitely, it is because it builds the child's sense of belonging, you know, in, in the school. And so with the, their confidence as well and their sense of contribution in the community, in the school. And that's why I encourage parents actually to be proactive, what can I do to support my school? So even for us, we belong to an ethnic community, as a Filipino, what can we share in our culture, you know, to the school? For the school to actually grow in knowledge, to become more culturally aware. And, and that's when children, you notice, um, even in early childhood, for example. And we've got parents who come and read in German to the children. You know, even if our children do not speak German, it's only one German family. But for that child, that really empowers him, you know, and then just makes his sense of belonging grow and the confidence in. You know, it's like, wow, I am a part of this community, they embrace me for who I am and my culture. So, yeah, definitely, it affects yung, I know, yung, uh, your children's, um, development in the school.
And I wanna add, the best way to teach something to a child is to role model it. So if you, if they see, ah, active yung parent's school, they participate in activities, they'll do the same thing. So even if it's not at school, I have a student who, nasa politics yung parents niya eh. And so ngayon siya, he wants to be, he wants to run for Student Council. He wants to, ano, be part of this Enviro Leadership Group. And even if hindi siya nabu-vote kasi bata pa, there, there, he's still gonna have a go. So it's really just role model, role model what, what behaviors you want to see your child learn.
First of all, yung Board of Trustees are not that, um, uh, I guess, you, you know, one of the things really about the Board. It, it, parang, it's, it's not present in the day-to-day things in the school. So they, you, you, it, it's like you're working on the background of the school, so that's one thing.
Or, or your kids just say, oh, my dad is the Board of Trustees.
Really, yeah, because one of the key things you really need to be aware or conscious about is, it shouldn't give any privileges across the school if your dad is a officer of the school. Type of a situation. It, 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 people needs to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, everybody's equal. And it doesn't make for a student above anything else because he has access to a Board of Trustees, uh, member. That type of situation. Secondly, uh, I, I think the, the, the better thing there really is what we're finding out from our school at that time was that the consistency of messaging or the consistency of, um, uh, what, what they're learning in school. It's consistent with what's being, um, I guess, disciplined in the house. Creates a better learning environment for the child. Now, if the parents are detached from the school, the expectation is really different. Um, well, could, the, the, the child gets confused. To remember this, the time that child is in the school is their most delicate formative moments. So from, from, from that time, especially in primary, uh, that's the time where they actually suck in a lot of knowledge. Kaya, if it's inconsistent, if the values are not consistent, if the learnings are not consistent, if the discipline is not consistent. My he, he, i- 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 you're, you're, it, it just creates more confusion to, to child. So it impacts their behavior, it impacts their appetite in terms of learning. Uh, you, you can see their attitude in terms of, you know, how, how they want to go to school. And, and it, it's really difficult sometimes communicating because they need to filter their thoughts. When I'm talking to my teacher, I need to talk about these things. When I'm talking at home, I need to talk about these things. So if they're talking the same level of language across school and house, it, it's easy. But if they need to filter between those two, so it, it just creates a lot more. You know, it, it, it pulls the child both ways.